Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Tuesday, March 5, 2019 Selectmen's Meeting. We just came out of non-public.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we seal a non-public record until such time as a majority of the Board feels it is applied and it's imprudent to unseal them.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Matt, you want to do the...
Yeah, I would move to approve the Selectmen's public meeting minutes dated February 19, 2019. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we did not have a non-public right.
Okay, we'll move down to new business. A fire station, fire rescue station.
This is just kind of a...
Good timing.
I know. This is just kind of a part two of two weeks ago when we were here, we're talking about it. So, I spoke with Kelly Davis, the architect, on Sunday, and just some clarity with him is what we're waiting on now, and I think, Bob, you just were telling me on the way in, the numbers are going to come within the next few days.
Right. You said they'll have it ready for the next Selectmen's meeting.
Yeah, so what basically, what I told Kelly is, we expect to do this part of the project under the original terms of the agreement. However, and by the way, there's also a portion of the contract that calls out this kind of new scope item. I forget, I forget what page of the contract it is. But at any rate, told Kelly and the other stakeholders, we're looking to get numbers as a board that we can look at before we move forward, but the idea is that we're going to move forward under the current agreement. So, this isn't going to be a new project, going out for bid and, you know, that sort of thing. Our contractor has subcontractors lined up, and we have an architect, so we're going to have some numbers we can put around this very shortly, and we should know about whether it's going to stay within the budget, which we hope it will. If it doesn't, we can talk about what we can do with some other funds to do it, but it's a pretty straightforward project. And what I always try to remind people is, we're basically, somebody correct me if I've got this wrong, but it's the supply end of the sprinkler system we're dealing with.
Correct.
So, it's the pump. So, it's, we need a better pump, better standard with a pump house to go with it to supply the sprinkler system. Nobody's ripping anything out of a brand-new building. It's just, basically, we're plugging in a pump system to meet building requirements. Obviously, a lot of this stuff can't be done. The target date is like April 15 because of the weather has to be such to do some of this stuff, digging and whatnot. So, we're really not in a, in a position to worry about our deadline, which is August 31st, so.
Okay.
That's basically all I have, so based on what Mike told you, it sounds like next meeting we'll...
Have all the numbers?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, let's move to B. RPC, electricity, aggregation. Yeah. Okay.
Well, everybody received an email on this from Rockingham Planning Commission wanting to know if the town of Newton would be interested in joining them to see if we can get better utility rates. The packet that is on you shared, basically, what we're looking at tonight is the memo with the five questions, which you don't have to respond to, we can do that. We just basically need to know if the Board's interested in, you know, joining the coalition, I guess.
I think we should send somebody.
Well, I am an RPC Commissioner, so...
Your middle name is RPC, Jim.
So, they're having their first meeting on March 18. Are you saying, Jim, you'll go to that? Because I know Diane said she would go, but we didn't know if one of the Selectmen want to go as well, or if you want me to go, or...
I'm good with Jim going. I know it's 10:00 AM on the 18th.
Well, it's a Monday, so it's a...
Yeah, that's true. That'd be good.
I'm not, I won't be here at town. I'm doing next Monday, but it's Monday after, so I can attend if Diane wants to go. I looked at the questions, there are five questions. Most of these would have to be answered probably by Kim, our bookkeeper.
Yep, she said she'd pull the numbers and stuff together and the copies.
I did look at the MOU. And hopefully, at the meeting, they would explain just how, I think they're asking for the MOUs to be signed before the 18th.
No, April 5.
Oh, okay.
Yep. But they want this before the 8th. They want to know if we want to participate by, before the 8th.
It'd be hard to say if you want to participate or not until they've had the meeting where they're explaining what their intent.
Well, they, they need to know how many people that they think we'll include, and then they'll put their stuff together. And I think it's later on that is when you, once they have all those numbers, that's when you decide if you want to stay or not.
Right, because isn't it initially, they're just looking to determine how much interest there is?
Right.
From the towns?
Okay.
And that's all they're looking for from us right now is, are we interested in pursuing further information?
That makes perfect sense to me. I just don't want to make sure the town doesn't get locked into anything.
No.
I think Kate had a question.
We need to...
Hi, Kate Michaels. Did they publish any rates yet? Or is it just literally a fact-finding...
They'll end up going out to bid with different companies and then see what they can get for the best.
Has the town looked at other cooperatives, like our town that I think also participate in reduced rates for electricity and...
We did go with another company a while back. It was supposed to get a special deal on it, and it didn't end up being so special.
Yeah, we had another company that worked with you and the till, but that was, we were paying, we ended, it started out great, and then we ended up paying a lot more, and we went back to you and the till.
Right.
We did try it at one point.
But this, according to this, it doesn't change the company you're with, they just get the, what do they call...
Group rate.
Like a nice group rate.
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Yeah, the school district presently does a contract for their electrical service.
Oh, really? Will they be joining this, you think?
I have no idea because this, the budget, this is next year's budget stuff. However, I do know that one of the things that the school district found was that when you sign a five-year contract, there's no, usually, fourth or fifth year, things start to go up.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they, they get you, and then they, after.
Exactly. So, you, you need to be careful.
Well, it's just like Comcast with their first two-year introductory...
I was going to say Comcast.
Their first six-month or 12-month introductory rate, and then they double it.
Yep.
And it continues to go up from there.
But it does sound like they're actually using another company, Hill Energy Services?
That's who's going to, I think, generate all the information.
Yeah.
You don't need a motion, honestly, to send Jim?
We just need...
Well, no, you need to make a motion to, to fill out the, the questions, and at least, you know, the Board says...
Fill out the five-question there from RPC, electricity, aggregation, meeting, and send Jim to the meeting.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now you have to go, Jim.
It's in the minutes.
Right. Okay, C. Signed commercial haulers policy. We have right here.
Yeah, that policy simply shows the, everything has been taken out about the...
That it was a pilot.
Pilot program, thank you.
So, it was a pilot for the first year, it's no longer a pilot, so it's been revised to remove any reference to the pilot.
Right.
Yeah, but none of the rules or guidelines have changed? They're all the same?
How many do we have now?
One.
Just one still?
Yep.
I believe we did advertise...
Was it on the website?
It was on the website.
And the email went out also.
Okay, yep.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll move to sign it. We approved it at the lot, the February 19 meeting.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we had, I saw Diane posted to see if there was other interested parties, right? I assume no...
Did you second that one?
Lisa seconded.
So, what are we doing as far as the, are we at that point, will we do that small fee?
Uh, yeah, yes.
Yes, it's no longer a pilot program.
Yeah, they had to pay.
This is the new year, there should be a fee.
Do you give a deadline, or is it...
10 days after they sign up, it says that on the contract.
Say what?
Says 10 days after.
Oh, 10 days, okay.
It's in the policy.
In the policy that the permit fee will be paid within 10 working days after the lottery.
So, let me, let me ask, and it's probably right here in front of me, but I'm too lazy to read it right now. So, if, if our one hauler pays the permit fee, say, tomorrow, is it for 2019?
Yes.
So, even though he's, he's kind of midstream, it's still only going to cover the calendar year?
Yes.
Correct.
So, he would have to, whatever it is, January 1, 2020, he's going to have to pay the fee again.
Correct.
And that would be the same, so if we get somebody who shows up in June and says they want to do it, and the Board approves it...
No, because that's a, essentially...
Pro-rated.
That's essentially a full year. And as far as the existing person, we haven't prevented him from doing it in January and February.
Right.
So, he does owe the full year fee.
Right.
But it should be prorated.
I'm comfortable with that. I'm talking about a new person.
A new person should be prorated. So, if, if we get a new one who comes in that the Board approves of and starts July 1, well, that's only six months, so that 500 would be prorated to 250.
Hopefully, in November of 2019, we will remember that there is a process that we have to, to follow.
Yeah. Could you remind us to remember?
I will do my best.
Kate, do you have any questions about trash hauling tonight? Could you sit a little further from the microphone?
Yeah, I don't think the person next to you was able to hear you.
Hi, Kate Michaels. What's the permit fee, what do they pay the town, and is it...
$500 a year.
Is it like cable where it goes up?
That fee is to cover administrative costs and any additional work that may be encountered at the transfer station due to an increase in volume.
Okay, will the fee go up over time with cost of living, et cetera?
If, the purpose of this is not to cost the town any more money than before we implemented this program.
Oh, right, to create earning money?
So, if we find out that we need more money to cover administrative or other costs at the transfer station by allowing this, then yes, that fee could go up.
Okay, but right now, it's like zero sum. There's not a benefit financially to its town, but the residents, there's a benefit.
Correct.
That's, Chris, I don't understand.
And the, there's no, I think this might have been where you're going, we didn't build in any sort of escalation clause to, you know, raise it automatically. We would vote, somebody would, would say, hey, you know, it's been whatever, three years, we should up it.
Thank you.
Yeah, or even the transfer station manager could come to us and say, you know what, that $500 in fees isn't covering my laborers' hours, or whatever the case may be. And then the Board would decide at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, D. March 12, Town Meeting. Review availability of the Selectmen to ensure quorum.
I have my snowshoes already packed.
It's almost another day before, so we're good.
Yeah, so, let's not scare people.
Start to finish.
Because it is seven days away, so if anybody's going for a weather forecast seven days before, they're, they're going to be disappointed, so.
And the other storm, we were supposed to get, what, six to 12?
Yeah.
Next day, next day we get two to three.
On that Monday.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so I, I for one, as I said in the last meeting, I'm only going to be able to commit to being here eight to five.
And I'm coming in to cover you.
So, you'll do...
Five to midnight.
Won't be midnight, but you'll do five to...
I'll be here all day.
I'll try to be here all day. I'll know for sure tomorrow. But I'll be like, eight to 8:05.
Right, right. Long enough to vote and go home. By the way...
Eight in the morning to 8:05 at night.
I did consult the moderator, and there's a thing, I think some of us know about this, but it's called a Selectmen Pro Tem.
Yes.
And he said the only thing you would need to do, and you might want to do it in writing to make it more official, but I could turn around and I could say, you know, I'm picking on him because he's probably watching at home, I could say, Bill Landry, you're, you're my Selectmen Pro Tem. So, I don't have to have a quorum vote or anything with you guys. I, as the, you know, the position holder, I can tap him on the shoulder, probably put it in writing, and I can go out to lunch for, for an hour or whatever, if need be, and I can come back and basically say, Bill, I'm back, you know. Hopefully, Bill didn't screw up the town at that point with his, his, his power, the awesome power that I gave him. But, so it's that easy. So, in other words, if one of us is stuck in traffic or something like that, we do have the ability to do something because, for those watching at home, we do get, commonly, we do get an inspector coming in here to make sure we have a quorum of Selectmen from that eight to eight.
I mean, I just have to ask you, have you ever been stuck in traffic in Newton?
Well, might be in, you know...
When there's stra...
It's going to be a blizzard, so...
Two snowplows could collide.
Okay.
Bob, what did you say?
I should be able to, I'm going to verify it tomorrow.
Eight to eight, you think?
Eight AM to 8:05 PM.
Okay.
I'll be here until we sign off on the ballot closings.
Me too, start to finish.
Okay.
At sometime during the day, I will need 15 or 20 minutes.
Okay, so we'll go to B. Clearing snow from the front entrance to Town Hall, which, good thing Kate Michaels was here, so we can let you know you need to bring your shovel, if it snows.
It's part of...
Candidates work, so they shovel the pathways.
I, I want to put it out there, Charlie Melvin was the best shoveler last year during that storm, and I can say this because I was standing next to him the whole time. He cleared more snow than half the plows in town. He was, he had that, he was going by with that scraper, so.
And I did the sweeping of the stairs, just sweep the snow off.
And I did, I did the previous year, so everybody gets a little bit of credit.
It never snows on my year, so I haven't had to do it.
Well, I guess part of the question is, Mike going to clear the front? I'm told he's going to clear the front so people can park down in the front and come up the walkway and that.
Yeah.
Are there any issues with where the people are standing out there?
They're going to have to shovel their own little standing spot.
Because I know with the new sign there, it kind of takes up a lot of that space.
I mean, we did it, granted, there was no snow, but we did it in September and November. But the, the rule is, they're supposed to be off the pavement.
Of course.
So, that's just the, there, so like you said, Mike usually comes up with the plow to clear some grass, but they just, the moderator will come out every so often, too, and enforce that, so people need to know that. Like we just told Kate here, bring your own shovel, because if you need a little more grass area to be comfortable, you got to clear it yourself because your feet are supposed to be off the pavement.
You might want to bring a rubber mat to stand on, keep your feet off the cold.
No wooden pallets, please.
And I'd like, I'd like to outlaw pop-up canopies because I thought that was cheating last time when there was a candidate there had their own pop-up canopy to, to keep the rain off of them. That's cheating. You need to, you need to feel the elements.
It, it, it gives them so much more room than every other candidate, so if they take up all that room, that eight or 10 or whatever...
Just tell them, they get a three-by-three spot, so if there's more room, somebody gets to take it underneath the canopy.
I do believe we have no power whatsoever to enforce anything like that.
Actually, yes, the, the canopies, we do have the ability.
Do we?
Because it's town property.
Yeah.
Right, we can't let somebody monopolize the whole side of one, one side of the walkway and tell everybody they can't stand there.
I was actually joking, but, you know, so...
Is that the moderator that goes out and speaks to the people?
He's in charge of it.
And he didn't have a, have an issue with it before, but, yeah, the only thing I'd be worried about is if you had 12 candidates out there and everybody showed up with one, that'd be, you know, tent city, and that would be, so, but game time decision, I guess.
Okay. Okay, we'll move to E. Elderly housing units. Oh, wait, did you have a question? Nope, okay. Elderly housing units.
Well, Diane did this, you know, she thought it was too easy, so I guess we're looking at the Board to just verify, make sure that you agree. I don't think we've had a lot of new development, new development. I mean, we've had some, but I think this year we'll have more because of the subdivisions that are going in, other, yeah, the subdivisions, but...
Well, actually, we, just as a playing Boy member, we have had a lot of small developments lately, five and units.
According to the occupancy permits, we haven't really had that much.
Completed, anyway.
You might have commercial, but not residential.
No new occupancy permits, but four new dwellings.
Hmm.
And if you're, if you're not sure, Jim, we can hold off on this till the next meeting, and we can verify. I'm still not sure what happens with, like Jacobs Village, because they had so many permits and never rebuilt, never built those additions.
That is something I've been looking into as a, I've been filling in for Gil.
So, we don't have to vote on this tonight, we can wait and see if we can clarify that, but, you know, if they keep getting more and they're not building, what's the point?
And it says number of dwelling units as of 4/1/2016. Is that the last time we...
I think Diane said she didn't do it last year, because I don't know why, she didn't think we had to keep doing it, but I said, I think we have to keep doing it.
Yeah, we're supposed to be doing this every year.
Yeah, yeah.
Because below that, it says total new units as of...
4/1/2016. That's right.
I know, the line below it says 3/31/17.
Oh, yeah, and look at that. So, a little discrepancy here?
After, after that, we have the, I believe it's seven units on Chase Road.
We can, we can double check.
Yeah.
We'll check for 17, because she said she didn't do it for 17, so we'll, we'll do that one, too, and both of them.
Okay, so a little more research and come back to us with an updated document.
Okay.
I mean, it, it does make sense to me that we would possibly have 23 units available for development. Because Jacobs, sorry, Sargent Woods was the last one to be built, and they're actually, they're 115, they were originally set for, I believe it was 124 between the two separate projects. There was Sargent Woods and there was Fitzgerald Estates. And when Fitzgerald Estates sold to Lewis Builders, Lewis Builders didn't want all of the units because their style is different. So, I think they surrendered some. So, it makes sense that we would have around 20, at least in my mind. So, 23 makes sense.
And that was in 17, you think?
That was in 16, or, yeah, I believe it was, that was finished in...
All right, 16.
16 or 17.
Okay. Okay, we'll, we'll look into that.
But that does mean that we're now, because 20 units is the minimum for a cluster development in Newton, and usually, senior housing is done as a cluster, both Jacobs Village and Sargent Woods are cluster. Requires 20 acres minimum to do, and 20 acres allows you 20. So, it is now large enough that somebody with a 20-plus acre lot would be able to, to put in and request...
Right.
You know, 20 units. There is some discussion going on from, at least amongst some people in town regarding Jacobs Village. They've used 10 of their 20 or 22, they've actually built 10 of the 20, and nothing has happened in quite a number of years, so we have to...
So, I thought that was by the wayside.
Well, no, that, yeah, but they, they still get to retain those unit...
But there's, there's no limitation on like four years?
That's, that's what we're trying to find out.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Let's move on to other business.
Make a motion to sign, send the manifest dated 3/5/2019, any amount of $98,895.42.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Make the motion to sign payroll manifest for pay period 2/17/19 and through March 2, 2019, with the pay date of 3/7/19, for a total of $40,176.84.
Second.
Second.
Attention, Jim?
He was the second second.
Oh, too late.
Okay.
He thirded.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to sign the Veterans Tax Credit for MAP 13-12-15-19 for the tax year 2020.
It's 13-2, not 12.
Sorry, 13-2.
Another second?
Larry seconded.
Oh, Larry seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you want to do the announcement for Brandon?
Sorry. Get back there. We have one announcement for Brandon Merrill was hired as a firefighter, EMT grade seven.
7.5.
7.5, sorry. Step two, effective February 5, 2019.
Congratulations, Brandon.
Yeah, welcome.
Welcome to the town.
I would also like to announce that this is our chairman's last meeting, not counting Election Day, even though it is a town meeting, and we would like to thank him for all the time, the years that he has put in to help the town and work with us as a Board.
12 of them, right?
11 years, four terms.
12 years is worthy of a standing ovation.
Thank you.
You can do it on Tuesdays now.
Tuesdays, I'm going to come and just heckle, I'll be in the crowd.
You won't have a popcorn like the rest of them?
Yeah, there's, when I went to the opening of the fire station, there was people talking to my wife, trying to figure out what they can get me to do next. So, they're, they're trying to come up with ideas, but I don't think any of them are going to work.
Nice beach, maybe?
What's that?
A nice beach.
Me?
Yeah.
Town Beach, you want to work the town beach, we need lifeguards, so...
Yeah, there you go.
That's a nice beach.
Okay, I'm good with that, too.
I had one, this is kind of a, a regular one for the Board if they'd be behind it, but I'll make it as a motion anyway. I'm selfishly not going to be here in two weeks. We will have one new Selectmen this time, right? So, four of us will be here. I would like to move that we hold off the reorganization of the Board until the April meeting, which would be, is it April?
Second.
Second? Anybody?
I will second that. I will second that. I agree that we should have the full board here, and we shouldn't have to require you to call in on your vacation.
Thank you.
Oh, it's become a tradition.
I know, but I can never hear anything and...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So, we would just, in that case...
Lisa would be the chair.
Lisa would be the chair for that meeting, right, because she's the, holdover vice, yeah.
So, I'd be the acting chair for that. I wouldn't be the chair, but an acting chair as the vice chairman.
Do we want to since, I, I will say, this is me personally, I have been on the Board of Selectmen for five years, and through those five years, there's always a few challengers, I guess you would call them, people new that are running for selectmen. I will say, I, I think, I think for me to say none of them have ever come to any meetings in person is wrong, because I think Lisa might have.
I certainly did.
But most of the time, they don't come, so I'm, I'm going to put Kate Michaels on the spot, because this, for those watching on TV, the room is entirely empty, except for Kate Michaels, she's on the ballot. So, do we want to give her a microphone for half a second, since she showed up?
I'm okay with that.
Hey, we're open for public comment.
Yeah.
Well, I want to thank you for all you're doing.
There's a time limit, right?
Time limit, no, and wow, 12 years, very impressive, thank you. I actually enjoyed this meeting.
Because it was short. They're usually not that short.
This is not an example, example.
Yeah, but I mean, you, it's, it would be really a privilege to work with you guys. You do a great job, you're all getting along. I feel like I could get along well with you, and thank you.
It's like anything, it all has its ups and downs and a little bickering back and forth, but at the end, we all do what's best for the town.
I can see that. Thank you, please.
Try to move...
Thank you.
Try to move forward, that's my only thing with who, whoever sits in Bob's seat, uh, in two weeks, we just want to, somebody who will work with us to move the town forward.
And the last thing I'd like to say on another topic is, we did have our open house ribbon-cutting ceremony this past Sunday. We had Senators Shaheen, Senator Hassan, thank you, Hassan, is it Hassan? And Congressman Papas join us for our celebration, and I would just like to thank everyone who came out to help us celebrate this momentous accomplishment for the town.
Thank you, Lisa. There's a lot of people involved and a lot of work that went into it. Okay, does anybody have anything else?
Don't forget to get your absentee ballots, by the way, everybody who, when's the last minute, the last time they, 24 hours?
This week, isn't it?
Yeah.
Maybe they come in the day of voting, but...
And don't forget, voting is next Tuesday, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Plenty of time to vote.
By hour clock, not yours.
Doesn't matter what the weather is, everybody needs to come and vote next Tuesday.
Yeah, one of the things I learned at that thing on Sunday is they still, up in Concord, we love them all, but they still haven't figured out how to solve the problem for us, that we still have to vote if it's a state of emergency or anything, so. We'll, we'll all be here.
Okay, so we will close the meeting at 7:30 PM. Thank you, everybody.